We'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Paulie. Trustee Laughlin.
Excuse the absence.
Clerk Plavich here, Treasurer Ellery Summers here, trustee Crowell.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Present. This brings us to the adoption of the agenda. There are a couple additions that you've seen in your email. And that would be the addition of what will be new business item 12, which are the Elkhana County Road Commission, road agreements, and then new business 13. We had a late request to have Wyndham Gardens on the agenda as well. So our department reports will then be numerically sequenced at 14. Are there any additions to those two or corrections to the agenda as presented? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Some of.
A motion on the table, is there support? It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Agenda has been adopted. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment in person or online, please just simply state your name so that the minutes can reflect if there's any comments online. Seeing none, we'll move forward. This is the first opportunity, we're gonna try it out. We, as you see in your agenda, are kind of utilizing consent agenda for the first third of the agenda. So if I'll entertain, if there's any of the consent agenda items that would like to be pulled, to be discussed, please state which items you'd like to have pulled for discussion, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Reiner with support. We have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those and actually roll call because we have payment of bills.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to old business is a quote for exit signs and lighting invoice. This actually came before the board previous was approved by the board. I believe that the original invoice and quote was for, yeah.
It was approved at the June 14th meeting for $1,661 to be paid out of the maintenance and repair building, building GL in the general fund.
So now the inherent complexity to the previous motion was when they actually came to implement that quote. They also found the fact that all the existing brand new exit signs were ordered, were not in compliance and didn't have the internal mechanisms to be wired to afford exterior lighting. Um, so we did get a reduced rate because obviously we had only had those exit signs in our building for a year. Um, but nonetheless, I'm, this is coming back because this was not originally approved and it is at a higher level of funding. Um, it would still be my recommendation, obviously, we had to because we're cited with an infraction due to the original design as well. So the corrective action was to move forward with full system replacement.
What's her, may I?
Yes.
What's our recourse on whatever advice we got?
Well, I think we've already taken the appropriate recourse there. I don't know if I want to add live on that. I was a former employee.
Oh, was it was done internally?
Yeah.
Uh, well, the recommendation and all the peculiar were aligned internally.
Okay. Does he know where that could?
Yes. So it would still be my recommendation to move and utilize the same GL, um, which was 101265931000, which was maintenance and repair building. Um, to pay this invoice for work that has already been accomplished. Um, I'd entertain a motion to that effect with the same GL. 101265931000, we have a motion on the table by trustee Pro. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Yes, Laura.
So was the 1,00616, we had already paid that bill? No.
No.
We never paid. So we're just not paying that bill and we're paying 2941. Gotcha. Okay.
So this includes that amount or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And, and we sufficient funds budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I need.
Any other discussion? Uh, well, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Clerk Plavich, yeah. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, moving out of old business and into new with us this evening, we have our auditor Sheldon with Australia Lamp and Crenslan. Here to give us our audit report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to present the fiscal year 2122 audit. Um, so before we get into the audit report, I'm going to talk about a couple of the letters that are actually not bound into the report. So the first one is titled communication with those charged with governance at the conclusion of the audit, which is you, the board. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of key matters in this letter. I'm not going to go over the entire thing. So one is management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. We noted no transactions entered into by the township for which there was a lack authoritative guidance or consensus and all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. Um, in addition, there are oftentimes where we have to estimate certain numbers in the financial statements. There's certain numbers we know like cash and then there's other numbers like capital assets, accumulated depreciation and depreciation expense that goes along with that, that have to be estimated and reflected in these financial statements to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. So here under the bullet points are just a couple of those sensitive estimates and that the most sensitive being capital assets. Um, and also the potential claim regarding the litigation in the water and sewer funds. We encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management or performing our audit. Um, all misstatements have been corrected and posted and are reflected in the financial statements. And I'm also pleased to say we had no disagreements that arose during the audit. The last couple of pages of this letter are just kind of some upcoming standards that are going to be implemented in the future. So one that could affect you would be leases and that would have to be implemented for this fiscal year that you're in right now, 2223. I don't know of any leases that there are right now, but I know there have been in the past. Um, another one that could affect you is the first one on the last page of this letter and that has to do with subscription based information technology arrangements or what they're calling spit us. And it's very similar to the lease standard except where the lease standard has to do with tangible assets. This has to do with intangible assets and that won't be implemented till fiscal year 2324. But that could affect you if you have any subscriptions for software or anything that you pay, you, that may affect your financial statements. The next letter is matters for management's consideration. So during our audit, we consider internal controls over financial reporting. However, we do not audit the system of internal controls. Therefore, there could be deficiencies that exist that we don't identify during the audit process. So I like to point out that we do not express an opinion on the system of internal controls. With that being said, if any internal control deficiencies do come to our attention, we do have to report them to those charged with governance. So there were a couple deficiencies in the system of internal controls that we identified. So one of those is just material audit adjustments. So we did identify adjustments that needed to be made and those did become material, which led to that. Uh, the capital asset records, this has to do, this has been ongoing. Um, also, I would like to point out, these are all repeat findings, so none of these are new. Um, so I think all of you are aware that we haven't been able to get those capital assets for the water and sewer fund from the prior auditors and those numbers are very material to that fund, therefore that's what created this finding here. Um, the next two are really kind of boilerplate findings. They're in nine out of 10 governments. And when we submit a report to the state, the state actually asks, are there any findings other than these? They're so common, even the state doesn't care, but just financial statement preparation and segregation of duties. Segregation of duties is really just due to the size. I mean, you need a really large accounting department to fully segregate every accounting function. And it's just really not cost beneficial for most governments or even smaller nonprofits to be able to do that. Financial statement preparation, I mean, probably nine and a half times out of 10, we help us this prepare financial statements and that's what leads to this. Um, the next two, I actually wouldn't really expect there to be next, next year. Um, failures to comply with budgeting statute. So you guys, actually, I really want to point out that you did a really excellent job amending the budget. Um, there was one audit adjustment that led to one material budget overage. And other than that, the, I thought the budget was amended very well. Um, and then the inventory in the water fund, I believe this has really already been cleared up, except for it was, we didn't have the information soon enough to get it into the statements, but I know moving forward, we have that inventory. And so I expect both of these to be gone next year. So now I'm going to go over the opinion, which you can find on pages one to three in the report. So this year we did have a new statement of auditing standard number 134 that had to be implemented. So one of the key changes of this new auditing standard was an overall to the opinion. So it basically took the opinion to three pages, which previously was probably a little less than two. Um, and it added a lot of different language in this opinion. Um, it changed around where things went in the opinion and it really, the point of it was to make the opinion more transparent of what the audit was. So it was supposed to be helpful, although it lengthened it. So a couple of things that I want to go over is that other than the business type activities and business type funds, all funds did receive and other funds received an unmodified opinion, which is the best type of opinion that you can receive. And it means that we do believe the financial statements to be presented fairly in all material respects. The business type activities and business type funds did receive a qualified opinion. A qualified opinion means that we believe the financial statements are presented fairly, other than one specified area. And again, we already just touched base on this. It's really just the capital assets. So if you look under a basis for qualified and unmodified opinion or matter giving rise to the unqualified or the qualified opinion for the business type and business type fund, that's where you're going to see us discuss why that was qualified. And it all has to do with those capital assets and just how material they are. If we knew and if we had that capital asset list, it could affect assets, net position and expenses of those funds. So since we aren't sure how much it would affect it, or if that those amounts would be materially affected, we just qualify the opinion on that one specific area. The next section is responsibility, it's of management for the financial statements. So management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements and also for the design implementation and maintenance of internal controls. Um, another, the second paragraph here, under that section, that paragraph was added because of that SASS 134. So now the township has to evaluate whether there's a going concern for the 12 months past the financial statement date each year. Um, there that, that really wasn't a concern, so it didn't affect you much or at all, other than having this here in the opinion. Um, under auditors' responsibilities for audit of the financial statement, it discusses what our responsibilities as auditors are. So at the conclusion of the audit, we opine on whether we believe these financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Um, materiality is a concept that auditors utilize and we also assess various risks and internal controls. And after we make these risk assessments and we have a basis for our materiality, we then plan and perform our audit to gain sufficient audit evidence for us to base our opinion on. Um, another new part of the opinion is basically all of these bullet points here under that section. So we have other items that we have to adhere to for generally accepted auditing standards. And I'll just highlight a couple of them. So these, this is all new language, just to really be more transparent of what an audit is. Um, we have to exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism throughout the audit. We evaluate appropriateness of accounting policies and significant accounting estimates. We conclude whether in our judgment, there are conditions or events in aggregate that would bring substantial doubt for that going concern, which we just talked about. So now with those being done, I'm going to just go over the government wide financial statements a little bit. So those are actually on pages 11 through 13, but I'm going to look at the summarized version. That's in the MDNA on pages six and seven and just go highlight a couple items. So the government wide statements are on the flow accrual basis of accounting, which is similar to what a private sector company would have in their financial statements. Later we'll take a look at the fund statements, which is what you're more used to looking at. And those are on the modified accrual basis of accounting and really focuses on how money flows in and out and what's available for spending at the end of the fiscal year. So current and other assets increased about 1.2 million over the prior year. So when I say prior year, I'm talking fiscal year 2021. Um, in addition, current liabilities increased about 600,000. So about 500,000 of both of those numbers were really from those ARPA funds, which are being held in cash and an honored revenue account, which is a current liability. Net position increased about $800,000 overall from the prior year, which you can see on page seven. Revenues were very consistent with the prior year and total expenses decreased about $300,000, which increased that change in that position. So I'm going to just take a look at the fund statements now, which are usually more useful to those using the financial statements. So the fund statements are on pages 14 and 16. And then page 15 and 17 actually will show you a reconciliation between these fund statements and those government wide statements that we just looked at. So the requirement for these two statements came out of Gatsby's statement number 34. And some of the most significant items for the two, between the two statements are your capital assets and debt. So capital assets and debt are both reflected in that full accrual basis government wide statements where your fund level statements don't reflect those. So the general fund ended the year with an increase of fund balance of about 516,000 and about 500,000 of that was increasing your unassigned fund balance, which is available for spending at the government's discretion. Another, an important ratio to look at to measure the general fund's health is the number of days of expenditures that there are in that unassigned fund balance. So the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend no less than two months for that financial measure. So at the end of 2022, the township actually had about 521 days compared to 273 at the end of fiscal year 21. So that was an increase of about 248 days. So it far exceeds that GFOA recommendation and shows the general fund is in very good fiscal health. Um, the large increase in the number of days is just because that unassigned fund balance increased about 500,000 and expenditures stayed relatively stable for the prior year. So it's going to lead that ratio to increase. Now taking a look at the proprietary or business funds or business type statements. This is your water and sewer fund. So these statements are on pages 18 to 21. Both the revenues and expenses increased about $300,000 over the prior year. Um, there, the change in that position was pretty close to the prior year. There was a decrease in that position of about 250,000 at the end of 22 and it was about 300,000 at the end of fiscal year 21. Another change in the report this year from last year is the addition of the Brownfield redevelopment authority, which is considered a discreetly presented component unit to the township. So these will have their own statements issued and those are not going to be on the government wide basis of accounting. Um, and there wasn't too much activity during fiscal year 22 because that project was kind of just starting at that year. And there's not too much in the notes that I want to talk about or that changed really. Um, note 12 discusses the contingencies and claims, which includes the litigation concerning the water and sewer fund. Um, that's probably one of the most significant, no disclosures. There's not much change from 21, other than the amounts. Um, I think it's still kind of unknown what's going to happen with that. So there's not too much going on with that. Uh, there are a couple of subsequent events in note 14 that are listed. So these would have been events that have occurred since the fiscal year end. Uh, there were some projects that were approved for the ARPA funds that are going to be utilized. Uh, there was the short term debt for the fire truck was paid off and that was paid off with the equipment mileage in the public safety fund. And there were some payments to the road commission and a grant awarded to the township for the state of Michigan's first responder training and recruitment program. So I think that basically wraps up what I wanted to discuss in the report and highlight. Um, I also just want to take a second to thank Nathan, Michelle and Laura for helping us during the audit. I know it's a lot of work and you guys get us everything that we need. Um, so thank you guys for that. And with that being said, does anyone have any questions?
Were there any questions for?
Thank you for all you guys doing for us too. Thanks for making it so tangible.
Yeah.
Gets better and better every year. No cheers.
Corrective action plan. Plan will be coming back. Yeah, hopefully this week.
Um, actually, we already have that. I found it this morning. Yep. So you should be on that.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. You have a good night.
Thank you. Yep, yours all. Um, at this point, I'm really well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit and its findings as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion on the table to receive and file the audit as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing that, we'll call.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Clerk Plavich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. I'm moving forward to the next item of business are budget adjustments. We have three different pages, budget adjustments, principally, most are in the general fund. Uh, we have a couple in uh, public safety and then three in the water department. Any highlights that you need to discuss, Michelle?
Yeah, there's just, um, the ones for Dearborn are because we increased the life insurance for the general fund. So we just kind of corrected those. There's a few little like Medicare wasn't funded correctly for a few departments, so.
I see we're moving some things around from one one legal, we're taking 5,000 out.
Putting it into mine.
We're taking.
Uh, while we, Ms. McConnell is still here, uh, we actually tried before the chart of conversions. We actually wanted to pull principally a lot of legal and whole costs to the board of trustees. They wanted it divided out. Um, so really it comes down to, uh, if I have blight or other things where I have counsel that kind of goes above and beyond. Uh, and obviously I've kind of burned with this year, I've burned through a lot of a legal counsel dollars. Uh, so this is just a basically pull five from board of trustees back into my deal.
The auditors wanted us to make sure that we had an accurate representation of who is using.
Departmental utilization.
We used to just do it as one.
Would be nice if we could label it somewhere on here or on our budget itself, so that kind of know whether it's going to Tim or whether it's going to Fay or whether it's going to, you know, or whether, and whether it's, and whether it's for blight or other things, you know.
Coming from another attorney, another attorney. Um, no, it's actually, it's a it's just an unfortunate reality of some of the topics that we've had to, uh, address this season. So are there any other questions, comments, discussion about the budget adjustments as presented? I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'll support. Motion on the table and support, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Clerk Plavich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Next item of new business before you is a list of, uh, to be added to the disposal of fixed assets, uh, of which it includes 2018 Ford tractor with uh, seven different implements, uh, that we purchased through the enterprise fund. Um, and then also a 2016 Cub Cadet lawnmower, uh, through the enterprise fund uh, that I would request that we put on the disposal fixed asset list. Uh, because none of these pieces of equipment suit us satisfy the needs and the direction of what's already started to take place in terms of the water department and our boots on the ground with F and B. Uh, this past week, uh, we started, uh, implementing a project to see how it worked of having, uh, internal controls and staff do safe or safer digs in terms of whether it's a, a service line, finding a tipping point of what we can do internally. Um, so with that being kind of the point of discussion and a potential way for it to mitigate some costs in the enterprise fund. Um, we actually would like to potentially get rid of these implements and get a piece of equipment that would be more site specific and beneficial, uh, to the water department crew, uh, to hopefully curb some of the cost of digs between now and a hopeful funding date of our SRF funds. Um, this isn't, we haven't entertained any sale price. We did get a quote back from directly from Don's Ford. Um, but first things first is we need board permission to put these on the disposal of fixed asset list. If there's any questions?
I remember when, when Nathan was here and I was just attending as a spectator. I remember that tractor was purchased new, as I recall, and all that equipment and um, that was for mostly for water things, wasn't it? Was it?
And it still is.
Okay.
The enterprise funds, water.
But F and B doesn't need it.
It doesn't. It's, it's a jack of all trade and a master of none. Um, unfortunately, it doesn't, uh, the bucket, uh, doesn't have the reach or the digging depth capacity to really service any of our main scenarios where we have an, on average of five and a half to a six foot depth of burial.
Where's the vehicle with the?
Right? Yeah. And so we have a, a cost now of rental of a mini excavator. Uh, that was what they tested on, uh, to start bringing staff up to a trained level. Um, but as we move forward, uh, we have F and B staff looking at, uh, implements that would actually best suit the needs, uh, moving forward. So if there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with, uh, adding these, uh, items onto the disposal of fixed asset list.
Some of.
Um.
Who said it?
Cash can.
Motion's on, right?
Yeah, motion by withdraw McGraw deputy.
Oh, oh, this is a new motion. Okay.
So we have a motion and then support by Secretary Ellery Summers. Further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so when it comes time to sell these, how do we determine what the, what their value is and how much we would sell them for? How do, how do we come up with that number?
Well, uh, several different ways. One of them being, uh, an initial quote from the place of purchase, at least sets a benchmark. Um, then we can look into the public sector and see if we could potentially find a higher level of, of return. Um, we can advertise. We have several different mechanisms.
And just like accept votes for it or do a minimum bet of X amount or whatever.
Yeah, we could do it several different ways.
The tractor is pretty valuable, I think.
They never have a high rated depreciation. Tractors keep their value quite well.
And the lawnmower is a nice lawnmower.
Yeah, it just never gets utilized.
Right.
So I used it once. I heard, I'm still hearing about it.
I have one just like.
So are there any other questions or comments to the disposal of fixed assets? Seeing none, uh, although there's no, they'll become a back of the.
Right. Before we sell it, we would have to come back.
Yeah. Yep. So with no economic driver, all those in favor of adding these items to the disposal fixed asset list, uh, signify by saying aye. I oppose the same. Items will be added to the disposal of success. Um, moving forward is the, uh, L4029, which if every other trustee got the township magazine, you probably had some good reading. And I think you put it in there, didn't you?
No, I didn't. I just gave it to myself. Yeah, did you? We approved the, um, L4029 every year and MTA did have an article about it. And I did highlight the township board is actually voting to authorize the township's property tax rate for the township's winter tax bill. That's why it comes. for the township's winter tax bill. That's why it comes before the whole board, so. We need to make a motion.
The state thing, don't they determine that? I mean, in terms of.
Well, our operating though, so I mean, depending on that ebb and flow, this is another scenario where we actually, because of the timing mechanisms to be filed at the state, have to move forward with it at its current level. Uh, now, uh, if coming into the November election, fire mileage is successful, we'll actually have to amend this, correct?
Right. I would immediately do a new one and get it to the county. If we have to reapprove it too. I think we would.
Probably. Um, so with that being said, if there's, we have another opportunity for discussion, is there a motion to move forward with, uh, finalization of L four zero two nine?
Some.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with, uh, solidifying, uh, L forty twenty nine. Is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Further discussion? Yes.
So it says your taxable value of all part percent of human. At a point there, twenty point two was three hundred and seventy. So actually that's all.
No, assess would be the fifty percent. Assess value is always fifty percent of taxable.
That's what I mean.
Yep.
So it's actually twice.
No, this is taxable, not assessed. Assess value, SEB, that, that is when it's fifty percent. And correct me if I'm misstating that, but I believe that the assessed value is fifty percent of the taxable value. So the taxable value isn't double what it actually, that is our tax. Yeah. The assessed value is where you have that fifty percent drive of it. Hey, uh, we have a motion and support, seeing no further discussion, uh, all those in favor, actually, let's roll.
Clerk Flavich, yeah. Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee for all.
Yes.
Trust you, using trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trusty Polly. Supervisor Skimmy.
Yes. Okay, moving forward in the agenda. We have the water tower. Uh, Ms. Lynn, would you like to, uh, add anything to the, the packet I was?
Is this for the water?
I was prepared to, uh, to drive this, but.
So, um, the M thirty two booster station, uh, that provides water to the combat readiness training center in all parts west um, has, uh, two primary pumps and one larger fire flow pump. One of the primary pumps, um, is reaching the end of its useful life. Um, the original purchase date was nineteen ninety five. Um, so it's been in continuous service for twenty seven years. Um, at this point in time, we requested two sets of proposals. One was to repair the pump. Um, the other was to replace the pump. So there were two quotes to repair the pump. Um, and then three quotes to replace the pump. Um, based on the percent cost of to repair it versus replacing it and the fact that it is close to the end of its useful life. Um, we would recommend moving forward with replacing the pump at this time. Um, the low cost to replace the pump, uh, with a direct replacement from Kennedy Industries, uh, is eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty two dollars. That's the recommendation is to approve, um, purchase of a replacement pump. Um, and then if the township so desires at a future time to have the other pump rebuilt as a spare, we can look into that at that time and see if it would be economically viable to be sold.
So Kennedy.
Kennedy, Kennedy quote, uh, zero, zero, four, seven, 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 four. Um, for purchase of one, um, Xylem AC series eighty one hundred model one hundred standard mechanical seal, blah, blah, blah. Uh, price included, not taxes, of course, because you're tax exempt, eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty two dollars. That does not include installation. Um, our staff would perform the installation of.
Uh, the only, so yes, in, in this packet, uh, that Doug Moen forwarded it on, uh, Graham, there's actually five different, uh, folks. Graham was the only, uh, entity out of the three principal, uh, that did not have a quote for rebuild. And the out of the three, uh, primaries that had, uh, the lowest cost for complete replacement was Kennedy. Uh, my question to you, Ms. Lynn, is, uh, would this behoove the township to actually have this built directly to us? Or would this, would that negate a five percent admin function to this?
Well, absolutely, because this is a capital expenditure. So, um, basically that, um, if the township chooses to proceed in that manner, then you would go ahead and and it would be ordered directly through the township. I would request a purchase order number to be issued for that. And then it would be billed directly to the township as a tax exempt with no five percent.
So F and B would install it? Would that be in scope or out of scope?
The install would be in scope.
What's the difference between the pumps as or the companies? I mean.
Um, Kennedy is the original supplier of the, um, AC pump, the Alstromer pumps. Um, you know, all of them are reputable suppliers, um, you know, and all of them, you know, have, uh, quoted comparable. The thing, the reason I think that the, uh, price for Kerr pump is higher is simply because they would actually have to purchase it from secondary supplier. So that's why theirs is, was higher. And then, like I said, the cost to rebuild it, the two quotes to rebuild the pump, um, one was for, um, seven thousand dollars, but that didn't include any pickup or delivery or freight on that one. Um, from, from Kennedy and then the quote for Kerr, um, was nine thousand dollars, but that included them to do the, uh, the pump has already been, you know, uninstalled, but they would go ahead and, and do the, um, we're delivery of that pump. So there's, you know, a certain amount of cost to that, so.
And then also to add to that, uh, over the past year, we've held that this pump, uh, as Ms. Winn had stated, is on an oscillating cycle between the two primary pumps. Um, given the fact that they are all in the same ballpark age, uh, if we don't look at this proactively, the burden would then fall if, uh, the other principal pump that's been running singularly for quite a few months.
Yeah.
Um, if we had that pump go down and only had it fall back to the principal twice as large fire supply pump, we have, we have tremendous issues. Uh, we have the, the ability to, uh, decrease its variability, but nonetheless, that, that principal pump, uh, is to, for high flow usage of emergency events on CRDC. And we've held off on all of our other projects as we know as a board because of our service line issue. Th- this would, I also follow the recommendation of Kennedy Industries for a brand new pump. And actually we have in, uh, five nine two, five, three, seven, nine, three, one, zero, 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 which is the maintenance on a, on a, well, actually maintenance on system, uh, we.
Want to repeat that?
Yes. Yes. Five, nine, two, five, three, seven, nine, three, one, zero, zero, zero. Uh, falls onto the maintenance on system. It would be my recommendation, uh, to make this expenditure. Because if we allow the other principal pump to have an issue in this time, then we're, we have our, another set of headaches to deal with. So.
I'll make that motion.
If there's a mo-, to, to move forward with the, the Kennedy Industries, utilize, utilizing five, nine, two, five, three, seven, nine, three, one, zero, zero, zero. Then we have motion and support. Further discussion?
Yes, um, would we be wise as we can to, I mean, if the cost, uh, of, uh, repairing the pump is somewhere between seven and ninety five hundred dollars, uh, would, would, I think, we can buy one for eleven. I mean, would it be wise for us to have a backup pump that's another new pump? We can budget that.
Well, and, and I, I guess I always lean on the professionals. To me, I mean, yeah, in a perfect world, uh, I would love to have two new pumps and have both of the ones that have been in service long really condensed into one backup.
Well, there's, there's the, so the, the second pump was rebuilt several years ago. Um, I believe that was during the time period where we were doing, um, operation, operator in charge services, but we weren't actually operating the full department, um, that that pump was rebuilt. So you have one that's completely out of service and you have one that has been rebuilt. So it's in a okay state right now. So I would actually, um, either consider getting the second pump rebuilt. Um, you know, or at least have a complete teardown of it and inspection to see if it justifies being rebuilt. Um, and then if not, then I would wait a year or two before I bought a second pump. Because a lot of times you don't want, you know, two brand new pieces of equipment, you end up in the same position again, where both of them, if they're, if they're alternating equally, are gonna end up coming to failure at close to the same time.
So you're saying consider rebuilding the one that's already been rebuilt several years?
No, the one that, the one that is currently in service and is the lead pump, because this one's in the garage, um, is been rebuilt several years ago. So we would put in one brand new pump, leave the second rebuilt pump in service and then potentially have the one that has been removed, rebuilt and put on the shelf, so that if that second pump experienced any, um, issues that at least in the short term, we would be able to put that pump in there and then at some point in time, then go forward with a replacement of that.
What's based on experience? I know, told me this, but, oh, what, what is the expected life of a rebuilt pump?
Um, the expected life of a rebuilt pump, um, depending on the original condition of the pump, this is a drinking water application, so you generally don't have a lot of the abrasive materials and stuff that you do on a wastewater pump. So assuming that if they did a teardown inspection and the body of the pump looked like it was good shape and they were just going to replace the wearing parts, then I would expect another ten to fifteen years of life out of that pump.
Any other questions for Ms. Lynn? Seeing none, uh, roll call.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yeah.
Supervisor Skimmy.
Yes. Thank you very much. Safe travels. Uh, moving forward into, uh, new business item six, uh, fire department new hire.
Good evening, everybody. Mark Hansen, fire chief. On your agenda tonight or in your packet? I'd like to, uh, recommend Jim Stackowitz, James Stackowitz, as a new, uh, full-time firefighter, uh, MFR. He comes with us with the qualifications as a paramedic. Uh, many, many years of fire service and experience. Great instructor, has, uh, been a true asset since he's been on our department so far as a paid on call. And I would expect them to continue to carry out that, uh, role as a full-timer. And I'm asking this board for that support to, uh, put Mr. Stackowitz on as our next and sixth, uh, full-time employee. So we can help avoid some of this overtime and different things have been plaguing us for months upon months. So, uh, it's my recommendation, as a pleasure of the board, uh, that we put on Mr. Stackowitz.
We have a recommendation from chief to move forward with the hiring, uh, to the full-time status of James Stackwitz for firefighter MFR. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Yes. The motion is gonna say, um, upon completion of pre-employment requirements.
That's correct.
Yes, because yes, yes, physical, yeah, yeah. Has he been running?
So he, he's already done that portion of it. It would be the medical that, uh, here we get with.
Schedule.
So, so to that, uh, Claire, would you like just to repeat the motion that way?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we hire James Stackwitz as a full-time firefighter slash MFR upon completing pre-employment requirements.
And you're friendly to that.
I am, yeah. Are you friendly?
Yes. Friendly amendment, friendly support. Uh, we have a, a discussion on, uh, trustee Polly.
Yeah, I just have one question to bring to the board and support. Um, excited what they wanna do, but I understand the fact what's, what have a relative working with. Is that correct?
That is actually the correct. We just had a, uh, well, a, a quick meeting with, uh, three of the board members and myself this afternoon. We're trying to, uh, figure that all out, uh, at this present time. Uh, she is in the, uh, response of a medical first responder. She has no fire responsibilities at this point in time. Uh, she wants to pursue that, uh, in the, uh, in the eyes of, of policy five point nine that you're referring to. Obviously, there's, you know, there's past precedents that this has been done and, uh, we know that there's potentials. Uh, that's why this policy was put in place. Uh, so we're in the process of that discussion right now. Uh, I've talked to both Jim and Beverly about that already. Uh, we're trying to come up with some solutions and different things like that. And I had talked to the, uh, three members of the board that I would come back to them and we'll try to come up with some solutions viable, uh, to, you know, the suggestions, bring it before this board. So at this time, uh, she would come, she would be on as a first responder and, uh, Jim would be considered a full-time, uh, status.
But she currently is not a firefighter. She's just medical.
Just MFR at this point.
Man actually relates more to when firefighters.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we kinda beat that up earlier, but yeah, for the, for the purposes.
There's other board members weren't there when we were.
Right, yeah, no, you're, you're absolutely correct. They were not there. That would.
Yes. So when will we expect? Next meeting?
Um, might even be something that we could talk about in the next workshop. Would that be appropriate or at a personnel committee meeting?
Be five personnel and then it would be to the board. This is.
Okay, so I would assume that, uh, I was gonna request the personnel meeting anyhow for another issue. Uh, that maybe we can roll that right into, uh, that talk at that time, if that's fair enough.
Be a fair assumption.
Norm, your mic's not on.
Your mic is on. All right, can I touch that? Uh, so any other discussion?
Well, what are we voting on tonight?
Too tired.
Too tired, Jim Stackwitz.
In light of the personnel policy?
Well, right now there is no conflict inherent. That's, we've started the conversation because it's, it's a conversation that we need to have, um, because five point nine does have some statements in there, um, that we need to give consideration to.
But, but not now.
I, I think, at least in the conversation, I see the need and the greater need, uh, of bringing on Mr. Stackwitz. Um, but inherently it gets more gray when there's less and less separation potential. Um, right now she's medical only. Uh, and as a paid on call, we've, we'll probably be bringing some, some of the discussion back from personnel. At this point in time, I don't see an inherent, uh, conflict, uh, with, as it stands right now. Um, that was the conversation that we kinda left. We just started.
The balancing.
I did.
So you're familiar with.
Mm-hmm, I'm familiar with it. I know, so she's only on call.
That's correct.
And, and so what medical functions would we provide? Once, I mean, cause there's a limited amount of time until the city takes over, right? If it's a name.
It'd be all, all their pre, I mean, I'll leave it.
So prior to the county ALS, uh, unit getting there, any one of, any one of us that are licensed as a medical first responder, uh, will act in that capacity for patient care until we're relieved by county wide EMS ALS. Uh, so our functions at this point, because we hold a medical first responder license for the township, the township is licensed as a medical first responder. It doesn't matter whether I have twenty paramedics on my staff, they can only act in the function as a MFR, if you will. So, I mean, down the road, who knows? But, uh, right now we're licensed as an MFR, so no matter if somebody's an EMT, a paramedic, specialist, or just an MFR, we all act at the same level until county wide EM gets, gets there and relieves us from that patient care.
Further discussion? Seeing no other further discussions, uh, roll call please.
Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Supervisor Skimmy.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, board and welcome aboard.
Uh, well, next time you're working, come see me and we'll figure out when to schedule your. Call me tomorrow. Okay, just give me a call or whatever.
Uh, moving forward with, uh, new business item seven.
Okay. This, I lost my page here, so.
And, and chief, just, uh, one quick little insight, uh, under. And, and chief, just uh one quick little insight, uh under the policy and procedure. Uh, a, as an emergency, if you would have notified me and followed that, we could have approved this before. Without having to bring it to the board, up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
So just future reference.
I, I did call you, I don't know if that was not the pri- proper procedure, but.
Well, uh, the call between, there's a problem with the brakes and uh, a thousand dollar bill. This, just tell me and we can actually take care of this without it having to bring to board. So, but let's take care of it.
Well, that's great, that's great, that's great that I know that, actually.
Yeah, it's, it's in that.
Every day, every day.
And when you put your Herbie Hancock that you read it, we'll call you out.
Yeah.
So you have a recommendation, chief?
Yes, uh, we have a bill from R and R Truck and Fire Repair for one thousand forty-three dollars and ten cents. Uh, like to recommend that we pay that out of the equipment maintenance, GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, zero, zero. Uh, and that was for repairs of a ruptured uh air tank on the rear of the uh engine too.
Oh, it's the air tank? I thought it was the rusted lines.
There was a rusted air tank, the actual, the welds rusted through on that.
That's where the breaking of the.
Yeah.
Anytime you need to stop.
You can't need it, yeah.
What year is that engine?
Two thousand and eight, isn't it? Uh.
I believe it is a, uh, I know.
I think it is.
I think it's a two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
Are we talking engine two?
Yes.
I thought it was a two thousand thirteen. It's a two thousand thirteen.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head.
We have a corrected year of build. At twenty thirteen.
That sounds logical. It's eight years old.
Yeah, and we have.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Um, so do we have a, a motion to move forward with the recommendation for the invoice of uh one thousand forty-three dollars and ten cents? We have a motion on the table.
Support.
And support for their discussion.
So are we paying that out of equipment maintenance?
Yes.
It, no, this would be vehicle. But we do have a vehicle maintenance.
Oh, no, GL is.
Three.
Vehicle maintenance, but it says equipment maintenance, okay, so it's actually.
Nine, three, eight's vehicle maintenance, okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and support for their discussion. Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trusty crawl.
Yes.
Trusty Ryan.
Yes.
Trust you, Paulie.
Yes.
Or Clavich, yeah. Supervisor, Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor, Skippy.
Yes. Um, okay, moving forward, uh, new business item eight, uh turnout gear quotes.
Okay, um, as you well know that we have uh another paid-on call, Kevin Galloway came back to us. Um, at the present time, he is in a loner set of gear from, well, from this loner set came from R and R. Uh, we have several of our other firefighters that we put orders in back in December. Uh, I think for five sets through Phoenix Fire Equipment. We have not seen that gear yet, uh, it's due December, I've been told now finally. Uh, which isn't a big deal because we're using their gear in the process. Uh, but that loner program with their company has run out because they have all their gear out. The industry so far backlog with their particular gear, uh, so. I spoke with a couple area vendors. I have R and R that quoted a price to outfit uh. Would be paid on call, Galloway for this instance, uh, for a first full set of turnout gear, pants, suspenders, jackets, uh. And that would be two thousand four eighty-eight. Um, and they can provide that gear within sixty days is what I was been told. So it's my recommendation that we would make that purchase. Uh, from the uh paid-on-call personal protective equipment line item, two oh five, three, three, six, seven, three, one, zero, zero, zero. Then I, 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 uh, I just noticed on my uh note here that I may have messed that uh GL up. And I don't have the, my budget in front of me. Would somebody look at the paid-on-call line item to make sure I have the right GL on there? I think it's the two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, 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 not the one I.
Paid-on-call PBE, two oh five, three, three, six, seven, three, one.
Thank you. That is the proper, somehow or another, I didn't catch that, that I.
But you know, and there's four thousand available.
Correct.
We have a re- recommendation, uh, two oh five. Okay, motion. No motion and support for their discussion, yes, trusty Ryan.
Um, I have a question, you said Mr. Galloway came back to us, what was the interim? Uh, you know, where's, where's the equipment from before?
Oh, that's been redistributed to somebody else. Uh, if it sits in the cage and we have a body that will fit that, the piece of equipment. It uh, it goes on whoever's available next.
Well, and one question I would ask is that, I know that uh. Michelle and you were looking at uh active rosters on paid-on-call, and there were five that haven't been active at all.
Yeah.
And I guess my question would be, are one of those five sets of gear out there that aren't active, would that be best served coming back to Mr. Galloway?
Uh, at this time, I don't, I don't have that liberty to be all the, I don't have. Those folks with gear that would even fit him, number one, but uh, and we're really not at that number, uh, five, I'm not sure. When we talked about that. I have.
Give me letters for.
Oh, those, that gear uh for those letters that we receive, we've already used that gear up on people. Right, so those were, what they were was old resignations or. People that were let go for lack of training purposes. And I just, we just redistribute their gear to somebody else that's coming on if it'll fit them. So there, there's definitely no surplus of uh gear sitting around at this point in time.
Yes.
Is there any gear out? That hasn't been returned to us?
That was my, kind of my question.
As far as I know, not since I've been here, I don't know what happened prior. Uh, so I, there, there's no record of that. But now that we have that on the asset inventory list, we can keep better uh tally on what's going on there.
Any other discussion?
Trusty Ryan.
No.
Trusty Polly.
No.
Or Clavich, yes. Treasure Ellen Summers.
Yes.
Trusty crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor, Skippy.
Uh. We'll kick it down to October, no. That way when trustee laughing is back, you can bring this back, if you'd like.
Okay, I just want to point out to the board that the prices just continue to go up, that we, we will probably not maintain this price with the next go-around.
And they do continue as well.
Yeah, we've, we've had a thirty percent increase on turnout gear.
Could, as a suggest, could we, that grant you received for twenty-five hundred, could we purchase this with that grant?
No, it was specifically earmarked for automated external defibrillator.
Uh, moving forward, uh, new business item nine. The Omega Electric Sign.
I guess, I want to just to address the last issue, even though the board turned it down. Uh, we're in need of personnel. And we're borrowing a company's piece of equipment right now to outfit this individual to perform the duties. To help this township fire department be successful and putting out fires. Uh, the man has training, the proper certifications, and I'm not quite certain why we would uh neglect that. From this board to not allow us to put the person in a pro- appropriate turnout gear.
Noted. Uh, moving forward, new business nine.
All right, uh. New business nine would be the Omega Electric and Sign. Uh, I just had it in a different order on my list, so let me just get to that real quick. Uh, we're looking at uh doing some renovations to station two and. To give it a little facelift. And here tonight, I, I'm gonna kind of roll this all in together, uh, Haley, if you could bring up the uh. It's kind of all gonna go together in my presentation, it's a different light item. Uh, I've uh had the opportunity to uh have Lisa West here from West Design Incorporated. She come in, she helped, helped me uh put together a presentation for a, a visual for the board. Currently, what you're looking at here is our township fire station number two. Uh, and I was prepping this station, uh, and the aspirations of painting it. As I got done with that project, uh, I stood back from that and I said. If we're going to put paint on a pig, we're still gonna have a pig at the end of the day. Okay, uh, no matter what I do, if we paint this, you're gonna see all the missing paint, all the different things that go along with that project. Okay, it's, it's still gonna, still gonna look terrible. Uh, if you could go on to the next slide, Haley. This is what I would like to propose, and before you and your board packet would be under item number ten. Uh, and nine goes along with it because if you see the middle of the top drawing there, uh, that logo sign that uh. You can go away with the white, take the white away from the logo sign, but with that Omega Electric and Sign quote. That is one of the sign quotes for the south side station. Uh, that would be put on the uh facility after that metal was put on. And they would rewire a, a light, a proper LED light that hung over the top of the sign. Uh, to proudly illuminate one of our township structures. And make it look better than the urban Detroit look that we've got going uh right now. Uh, so I've taken a lot of time to put into this, I have to thank Ms. West for doing a visual. Uh, for the board and of course, the bottom ones, just like the CAD drawing portion, she colored the top uh of that. Now, our bricks are a little bit darker on the left-hand side by the entry door, so they'll match a little bit nicer than that particular picture. Uh, but went out and secured uh quotes from building supply companies, uh. Two of them, uh, Austinic Building Supply being one, and the uh. The uh builder's first source out on M thirty-two, they came in a, uh, for materials for this particular structure. That would be refacing the front of the building, uh, and if I may walk over here.
So, this would be of a whole fire metal. Fifty-year uh life uh ability on that metal, just to tie in this door over top of the, the door area. And make this nice, nice looking uh business front, if you would, and uh, excuse me. So, with that being said, the materials for the, the building portion of it, the metal. That come to eighteen, a hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-three cents. I also quoted in that quote in the uh line item ten would be the paint of the remainder of the building. And also on the south side of this, I should point it out. Uh, currently, on this particular side of the building, it's, it's a face like mangoes. That socket is all hanging down, and that would include fixing that socket, uh, the whole thing, the building. So, alright, so this is some, uh, well, as you well know, builders are really busy this time of year trying to get the year-end stuff done. So I was able to come up with a couple quotes, um. Woodland Homes, Custom Homes, uh, he's a builder out of uh. Mount Morantzy County, uh, he knows our situation. He's a current CRTC firefighter. He built the Tri-Township Fire Department in Mount Morantzy. So he's very familiar, very meticulous. He offered to do this project just for three thousand bucks to, to put the uh, the metal on this uh facility. And uh, obviously insulate it on the front. And uh, our next closest uh bid uh was from Bottom Line Construction. For uh seventy-five hundred dollars, uh roughly forty-five hundred dollar difference in price. But him knowing our situation, said he'd be happy to do that for us. And his goal was to have that applied to that building and done before deer season starts, November fifteenth. So yes, if Haley, if you could go to the next uh slide real quick. This is the color scheme of a local uh business just down the road from my house out in Hubbard Lake. Uh, this is the Anchor Market Store. This was a construction that was done by Dollhouse Construction. And uh, of course, they, they purchased their materials from Austinic Building Supply, not that that matters. But this is a generalized look of what the, what the colors are on that, and it's, you know, it's kind of, it's a burnt red. Uh, it's not a fancy pole barn red, but it's a burnt red to give it a doll kind of look. And uh, I just really think that uh. It would be a great showing to our township residents. That, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about how our building looks, the, the, the style of it. And I think this would really give a, a good uh facelift to the building and. Actually pretty reasonably priced to get it done. And it would, this would be obtainable within my budget uh line item for building maintenance. And I can pull that number up here real quick. Uh, it would be GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, one, point zero, zero, zero. And uh, and I don't know if this is something I even put in my uh. Request here, if this is something that could be considered by this board to maybe take apart in some ARPA funds for this endeavor. Uh, but I really think we need to show the people that we do some money, work with their money. Uh, whether this is, you know, it's an expense, I know it's not great timing. But I think it's, I think it's in inevitable that we show the people that we can do something with the budgeted items that we have. And, you know, this is, this is one thing that I think would be a great improvement in our community. And it's my recommendation that the board would adopt line items, uh, number nine, number ten as a whole package. Uh, the number nine light item with Omega Sign would also be including putting a sign. And these would be installed on the north station to identify it as the same as the south station.
We have a recommendation.
So you have a total of seventy-one hundred dollars, wrong numbers?
Yes, yep, seventy-one fifty-eight eighty-three, give or take, uh. Um, that's if we did not put the sign, the sign for the north station in this quotation. And we certainly could wait, I just thought if we're gonna make that move to make a sign, we're gonna have them do them, we'd have them do them both. Uh. That's, that's my thought process.
Have a recommendation from chief to move forward with both uh new business items nine. I have the cost of one thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars for Omega. Uh, and then the uh, did you have that spreadsheet broken out? So you're about seventy-five hundred dollars.
That's.
It's, oh, that's the five.
So these are. Those are the three.
Okay.
And if I might point out, that will also include the price of paint for the remainder of the building that we would not metal.
Yeah, yeah, but then there's another thousand one hundred and sixty-six. Can I, I just want to ask you a question, so, um. For painting the rest of the other three sides, is that an issue with the weather the way it is? Like, I mean, would it dry good or?
So according to the manufacturers, Sherwin-Williams, Home Depot and. Fitzpatrick Hardware, as long as we apply that prior to the uh temperatures getting below a steady thirty-five degrees, we're okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we go ahead with the chief's recommendations.
Well, let's do them one at a time.
Which one are we doing?
Omega by our agenda.
The signs.
Okay. So.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the signs.
I'll support.
Motion and support for their discussion. I'll reiterate some of the conversation that's been had internally as, I, as much as it is a great idea, it is. I, if, every building needs it, um, is this the best time, like you had stated? Because. Got a lot, lot of things up in the air, but trusty Ryan.
Well, here, here's my problem. I, I want to also look longer term, I mean, assuming this village passes. I'd like to see us move that station to a better location, and if we have the funding to do that. Over time, uh, we could perhaps pick up a better building in a better location for the south side coverage. Uh and and find that down either first further south on twenty-three or south and west. Uh and I've been thinking about that for quite a while. Uh we're six weeks away from the millage election and to me, just because something's budgeted, doesn't mean we need to spend it. We surely don't need to spend it in the first six months of the fiscal year. Uh we got an entire fiscal year here. I'm all for in favor of painting it, making it look better than it is. Uh but that building is a concrete block building. I was gonna say fixed install, but anyway, uh you know, there's not a lot of modifications unless you put a facade on it or something like that. And uh or peaked roof, if if the roof goes bad and you wanna do something with the, with it. So I think it's a flat roof, isn't it?
Well, it has a slight pitch to it uh in the main portion over the brick area over the uh living quarters and that end of the building, the north end of the building. It's basically like a swimming pool liner that wraps that particular uh.
We got some leaks.
Well, and I think we uh, we might have remedied a few of the leaks uh. Good old Flex Seal Tape and Spray.
That lasts for a while.
It'll work for a while.
Uh we did already have one quote, I'm sure it's outdated, how, because as we talk about capital improvements, roof being that that roof's leak, our roof's leak, the last quote we had for that roof just for south side was twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. So just as a, you know, with a longer view and and of course, such a short time until this millage uh is before the voters. Um I'm just, I'm just thinking the timing is wrong for us to vote on this and and spend my, yes, it's in, we budgeted for things. But that doesn't mean we have to spend it now, and that's where I'm at.
Through the discussion.
Yes, trustee. Yeah, I just think that um we need to get back to these gentlemen and ladies and the fire department. And let's hold off on this, on this, these type of things until after the election, after the election, to find out which direction we're going. I mean, I don't think this is critical, but it goes into another area.
If we continue to wait, Mr. Polly, uh we're gonna continue to wait. And we've been continuing waiting, specing out a uh bumper tanker of which we have the money for, which we've seen a thirty percent increase in that uh arena already. Uh this is a very reasonable price to have this done. We've had a lot of public outcry to have something done with this building. And I think that we need to show the people of this township that we're able to do some stuff, even with what little bit that we have. And I know it looks like bad timing, but as I was down there power washing and doing stuff, I had many people come in to stop and say, thank God, you guys are finally doing something with it. I think you'll find more dividends in the end of this than what you can imagine. And I, and I also got uh Lisa West here tonight, who is a business owner in the community. And she volunteered her time to put these drawings and stuff together and maybe she would have some input on this.
It's a typical, but you'll go to the podium, please, and to state your name, that way we have three minutes.
Lisa West, um so I, I am not political and I don't pretend to understand all of it. But I am a taxpayer and I get it when we get upset about taxpayer money going certain ways. Um but when I think about the south side and the whole push for the corridor at one point, and that that's kind of come to an end or something, but the, what, what Mark has been able to put together at this time with the prices that they are and the contractor availability, which does not exist. Um isn't, it's a small miracle, like that he, the this, the prices, the price is right, I understand. I mean, I'm just talking about spending money. The building will be amazing with just that bit of an investment. And there's pride and there's the south side. And so that is one more building. And as for me, I drive it every day going to my office. And I, I just think it would be fantastic and I understand that I'm just talking. But it, it, there is, there is merit to what Mark is saying about pride in the community, um getting people to want to be here, want to work here and know that we care about what our town looks like. So it is an eyesore and, you know, going to work every day, it it is an eyesore. But why, you know, so that's just my small take on it and why I was happy to help Mark out with putting some drawings together just to kinda give you a better view of what it would look like for that investment.
No, and we appreciate the time and effort that you put in.
And the only other thing I would say.
Yes, Michelle.
Um, I do agree that that building needs a facelift. I'm with Russ that the timing is bad. I would like, if we're gonna spend seventy-one hundred dollars right now, I would like to see it on safety equipment. Things that will help save lives or protect the lives of our firefighters. Not a facelift for a building at this time. We're six weeks away from the election. If that millage passes, yeah, so let's give it a facelift. But right now, I think that's seventy-one hundred dollars could be spent.
Well, and potentially on a business item uh eleven.
As uh, as trustee Reinhardt indicated earlier, I mean, obviously, if we were to move the building to the south, this would also increase the value of the structure to a potential buyer for that piece of property. So I think all in all, it's a good investment for very little uh of what it would cost us to take care of this. And I can assure you, if we wait another uh six months, this is, this deal won't be on the table. You know that. Uh you know, it's my recommendation as a morale thing for our department as well, that let's, let's have someplace nice to go work at, you know, uh what else do we give our employees? Let's have a little sense of pride. We're always talking about sense of pride in our facilities. This whole township hall needs to be redone. We all know that. But a little step is a step in the right direction and showing these people of the township and the taxpayers like Ms. West that we can do something. The people have noticed that I've been out there as a fire chief doing the preparations and trying to get this building ready. Because then I've had people from the board asking me, why is the highest-priced uh fire department employee working down there doing this? Well, I'm gonna tell you, I brought all my own equipment and I put the sweat equity into that building and tried to get that thing going. After I got done power washing it, it's a bad investment to put eighteen hundred dollars into a paint job over top of a pig. You're still gonna have the pig.
But you keep saying a pig, metal or paint, it's still a pig. The building is the building. And so it's just the, the metal.
The metal company, the metal does make.
Mister Jones, yeah, we're, this is an, an open debate or discussion, trustee or Ms. Ellery Summers.
Um I just have a couple things to say. Um my thought process is, I get it that, yes, the election's coming up. I, I get that, whether the millage will pass or not. Since I've been here over six years, I have driven by south side and it makes me sick. I mean, the color of it before even the power wash, I couldn't stand it. I was embarrassed that it was our south side. And it, and definitely I agree totally with the south side or the south corridor project and improving. There's other buildings along that strip that could also use a facelift. Um if we were, I think we're, this would be a smart way to do it and just do the front and not do metal on the sides and the back that would save a lot of money and just paint those. Not that that's ideal either. Um but and I know since we've been here, we, this year, we finally put some money into some landscaping here. I know we have received many, many comments from public on how nice it looks. I feel better. You know, coming in the door every day, checking it out, we still have more to do, but finally, after six and a half years, we've been able to to do that. Yes, it's seventy-seven hundred or whatever it was to to do this. But it's still a lot less than it would be if we did the entire building. And I do think there is a pride in our community that this is our fire station. We are here, we're not leaving, we're gonna rebuild and this is all part of it and we're moving forward and we're owning it.
Right. And I'll say as your chief, I would like to be able to have a product that I can show the customer that I'm doing my job trying to make things better. Whether that be a piece of emergency equipment, whether that be uh repairs to a facility that should have been done, God knows how long ago. Uh but I would just soon as not, I'll use Supervisor Skibby's uh term that he uses a lot. Let's not kick the can down the road here anymore. Let's put a face on this that we can be proud of as a township board and the township fire department. You know, it's kind of embarrassing to to know that these guys have to go to this facility that looks like a little more upgraded than a doghouse.
And I think we've all noticed the south side continues to, I mean, it just looks worse and worse. I mean, there's businesses closing down, open buildings, vacant buildings, I mean. And you look at that place and this is an opportunity for us to lead. Uh we're right there. Let's do something, at least make the front look nice and lead the community and say, look, and we're gonna put some money here, we're gonna make this look good. If nothing else, it's gonna add resale value. You're not gonna lose that. Not at this price. I don't see how you can.
I just, man, yes, I disagree. Uh it doesn't necessarily help the resale value of that building because that property without the building is probably more valuable than the property with the building. Uh that, that has potential development for several different things that corner, but uh so I would bet that any purchaser uh would, of that property would probably raise the building and uh uh put something different there. Uh but uh right now, uh as the economy is and as the uh so, it just seems to me irresponsible to spend this money before we know what the outcome of the millage is. And uh and and if that, I'm all for it. If, if that passes, if it doesn't, uh I think we you know, we put paint on it, which if we can put paint on it, I'm all for painting it, but I'm not necessarily for putting a facade on it right now. Or even a sign at at this point, because I think we're, you know, uh why are we doing that at this moment in time?
Well, trustee Reinhardt.
Actually.
Right.
Um my, my, and I don't think any of us disagree with, it needs a facelift. But it's hard for me when, what is more important, superficial improvements or garage doors that allow our emergency staff to get out safely from the building, right? And when the next quote's ninety-six hundred dollars with the GL that has eleven thousand three hundred dollars remaining, what is that priority?
And I'm gonna go, I'm gonna explain that when we get to the next line item as well. Uh you know, I would like to see referencing the next line item that you just referenced is that I wanna definitely replace the two garage door openers that are failing here. Uh my proposal was is that we would put a uh garage door in the back of this facility with a pass-through door. So anytime the guys have to go up to the dumpster, the tool room, the back bays, they don't have to open the large garage door up, they can go out and it also poses a, as an exit. And when the ocean inspector was here, that was one of the things we talked about, however, it never got written into the report. He said, how do you get out this side of the building if there's a fire? So that was one of the things that uh that I had talked about. I would forego the replacement of the door in this year's budget. Only get the proper openers to to run these two doors that we have. And maybe look at, after the millage does pass, we need to replace doors in the entire township fire stations, both halls. Okay, but I think we can get another year out of those, but I would really like to see us give a product to the people, this community, something they can be proud. And you know, I put a lot of time and effort into gathering the prices and stuff up on this. It is in my line item and my budget, and this is my recommendation that we do this.
So we have a motion and support uh for the first quote was from Omega uh for these signs. Is there any other further discussion? Thing none, roll call.
Trustee Polly.
Oh.
Thirclavage, no. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
No.
Supervisor Skibby?
No.
Next item was the south side station building renovate renovation quote.
Well, I think you need to back up a little bit. If you wanna have this painted, you're gonna have to have an a motion for that as well.
Well, I, I, I understand.
Voted down with.
With just the sign.
Was just signs.
Okay.
Yeah, we're.
We have got a motion, whether it's to just do the painting or to.
Yeah. No, that was, they're two different lines.
Okay.
Um so this item was for all the quotes from, for south side station building renovations. Is there a motion to follow the recommendation of chief to move forward with the recommendations or?
I'll make that motion.
Of a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendations, is there support?
So the recommendation is for
The whole nine.
Builders per source.
Okay.
With construction homes and Sherwin-Williams.
Okay.
What is that total?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
I have them circled.
I'm up with five thousand nine ninety-two eighty-three.
It's gotta be more than that.
Seven thousand one fifty-eight eighty-three.
Thank you.
How much is that?
Thousand one hundred and fifty-eight.
One fifty-eight eighty-three.
So to your motion? Judge Ellery Summers, are you fine with that?
Yes, what was the total again?
Seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
Eighty-three.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support for the motion that's on the tip, say, for the motion and support, further discussion, trustee Paul?
Yeah, the, the paint is sixteen seventy, is that correct?
That's correct. That's with nobody applying it.
Sixteen seventy plus fifty-nine ninety.
These amounts come to this.
Uh I guess. I had a hard time figuring out all these quotes and stuff.
Okay, so the amount I can, so what's the amount? Yeah, that is five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two eighty-three is what I came up with and that's what Mark has in his motion.
So just for paint of the facility quoted through Sherwin-Williams, it was one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight ninety.
Okay, that's funny, yeah.
So this is not.
Where did I get this number?
This number's right. Did you add the signs into it too, Norm? It is five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. So it's five thousand nine ninety-two eighty-three.
So the seventy-one hundred was the inclusion of the Omega.
Well, yes, that was adding it all together.
Yeah, that's painting it on three sides, not a lot of the front.
That's correct. This quote, however, the eleven seventy-eight ninety from Sherwin-Williams, that's the entire building. I just got a price on the entire building for paint. Uh I did not break that down. If we were to metal the front of the building and deduct that, first, we're gonna have to paint garage doors back to a certain color uh cause they're rusty and whatever have you.
Oh, those insulated doors.
They are.
And she said they're gonna put insulation in.
With that proposal would be an inch styrofoam insulation put on the front of the facility.
Did you say so, but to?
Uh they were gonna put a new soffit on the south side of the building.
You'd insulate just the front?
Yeah, well, yeah, because we're not gonna be continuing around the side with the, with the wrap of the steel, so we really can't insulate that. Uh but at least the front would be, you know, brought up to a little higher our value.
So we have a motion and support to move forward with the recommendation outside uh for five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-three cents. Any further discussion? Thing none, roll call please.
Thirclavage, no. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
No.
Trustee Polly?
No.
Supervisor Skibby?
No. That being said, I would like to make, or when somebody like.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the painting from Sherwin-Williams and Yamona. One thousand one hundred and seven.
We have a motion on the table and move forward with the quote from Sherwin-Williams.
I'll support.
You have a motion and support, further discussion?
What, uh, any idea what the cost of application of the paint would be, is that?
I have no idea. Uh and and really truthfully, folks, for us to put the signs on a building that isn't gonna be renovated, I, it really doesn't make any sense, to tell you the truth. I mean, it's kind of a package deal. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna put a sign on and we'd have to take it back off, pay somebody to take it on.
The sign is already.
Put it down on the sign.
Yeah.
Not many of these can't come back once the millage pass.
Yeah, what are you gonna do for a sign on the facility for, to let people know it's actually a fire station?
Did you have a plan B?
I think my plan here is a very viable plan, and I don't understand. We can put what money into backup water pumps and different things of that nature for thousands of dollars.
So chief, I'm gonna call point of order.
You call it.
And I did. We have a motion and support to move forward with the quote for Sherwin Williams. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Does that include or is there gonna be a fee for installing that thing?
Yes.
It's in addition.
Right. That will have to get another quote. There's several painters out there.
So.
Okay.
Further, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Third Clavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crawl.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Oh.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Yeah, motion passed. Next item of business, nurse station garage door quotes.
Well. I guess if we can't get our building to look good at the cell station, which is the worst out of both these, I'm gonna continue on with my request for the quote to replace the uh, uh, garage door and two openers as presented in the uh, in my proposal.
And that's with the pass through door.
That's correct.
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to move forward with the recommendation of, and which I have, I lost the page cuz I've been looking at the the quotes. Which quote was your recommendation?
Right here.
The northeastern, yeah, okay.
Wasn't it?
No. Buildings. I was just trying to get to it as well.
Yeah. So I don't, I have the two pages from the Austin.
This one.
I must actually had. Oh, it's in the other principal quote.
I think your packet's the most.
Well, I have two of this page. I mean, nothing else.
No, that was supposed to be there.
Okay.
Yeah, here, here it is.
Okay.
And then here's the picture.
Okay, so we have a motion and support to move forward with the recommendation.
Support of that.
I don't think anybody did.
There was no support.
No, I just made a motion, no support.
I'll support.
We've been supported.
But the question, just for clarification. It would be the quote from Austin Hardware, but the picture is attached to overhead door. Correct?
Yeah, it, I only had one picture.
What it looks like that.
Show the picture.
That's correct.
This is a safety issue too, where they're they could get out through that door.
That's true.
And should be a cost saving so that they get to their filling station, you don't have to open up your bay door, lose all the heat.
And it'll replace all the openers on all three doors?
Uh, no, we would replace the rear opener and the front door or road facing south side opener. We're currently not having any trouble with the north opener. Uh, not to say that next week it won't happen because they're all the same vintage.
So that's the ten thousand quote from Austin.
No, nine, nine thousand six seventy two forty.
Well, but they had tax on it. We're taxing.
We don't think, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, you can show it with no tax. I, on my version, I crossed the tax off and and they know that. That's just how the, when the quote machine brings it out.
I thought there was an underlined.
Oh, no, I. No, like.
That was the total.
Oh, sorry. It, uh, that's a cross through.
Yeah, so we have a motion and support, further discussion? Yes, trustee Paul.
Please tell me what nine thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars.
Garage door with a rear pass through, with a pass through.
Or here.
Yep, two uh, openers installed.
You mean the garage store has a pass through door within it?
Yeah.
If you were looking in the north, it's, yeah, that's why I got kinda turned around and all.
Yeah, so we're getting a door and with that. Right, so if you're just walking outside, you wouldn't have to open the door.
We're adding it.
This is the door.
Oh, here it is.
Falling down.
Yeah. It's in a different quote.
Yep.
Inside the.
That's my question. So that's the back door for here.
That's correct.
For here and an opener for a south side.
Nope.
No.
Both openers and the rear door here to be replaced.
Period.
Period.
Okay. So west facing has a north and a south door. The north currently, that motor hasn't bolted yet.
Yeah.
It's been principally the uh, the east side door that.
Yeah.
The air brach.
And they've had a lot of issues just trying to get the rescue out of the south facing door. In fact, it's hampered them from going several calls.
Slowing them down.
Yeah, and they're having to take a different rig cuz the door opened.
And we had a horror event where I actually hopped in the tractor and lifted the door so a fire engine could get out. So I mean, it's. Um, so we have a motion and support. Uh, seeing no other discussion, questions, uh, roll call please.
Yes. I'm. I just wonder how soon they thought they could do this.
Uh, I don't think it's gonna be terribly long, but uh, I can get a.
I just wondered if it's a couple months or if it's gonna be like a really long.
I would assume it's gonna be a month, month two.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call please.
Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Third Clavitch, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, um, moving forward.
Just a quick question, supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
I'm not saying that this can happen. If I can solicit the funds to get the building front put on at the station too. Is there a problem with this board till long enough to happen?
I, I never.
You mean outside of your budget? Is that what you're saying?
I'm talking.
Donations or something.
Get a donation.
I don't think, I have no problem with it.
There's no.
I have no problem.
Donate donations there.
Okay.
Money and property.
Thank you for your time.
Maybe taxes up to the good donor.
Yeah.
Or tax.
Um, Mr. Jones, this is not. You know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, chief. Uh, at this point in time, the next item of business is Okina County Road Commission. Uh, road agreements. Um. Uh, so I sat down uh, with Ryan Braggy and Kurt Gania uh, this past week. Um, we have received our invoice for best control. Uh, currently, we have um, funded in that GL one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, the best control was thirty thousand. Uh, putting a remainder of one hundred and forty five thousand. On top of that was uh, our initial uh, road projects that we've already approved uh, to the tune of roughly sixty, but I ca- I calculated it out at sixty five, just to give ourselves some breathing room. Uh, so what you have before you is um, we have roughly eighty to eighty five thousand dollars.
They were emailed to you.
Yeah, they're all.
Oh, I didn't see.
If you would like my hard copy, that way you can see which roads, but then I'm gonna be on. Thank you very much.
Sixty seven.
It's a little bit. Um, so we have, long and short, we have monies available for road projects. Uh, and what's before you are five different projects. Um, of which uh, are all new gravel projects that have not been touched in the six years uh, that this board's been here. Uh, the first one that you will see in the in the packet is Guyot Road, which is a uh, short offset road off of heading east off of French Road. Uh, approximately two miles south of Bloom. Uh, this is a our cost on this project would be five thousand one hundred and sixty or seventy six dollars. Uh, we're still uh, at or below our fifty fifty map, which makes the remaining projects uh, valuable to us. Um, the next one was Birch Road. Um, it was uh, said to me at the road commission, Birch Road is uh, off of twenty three Selk um, residential street as well, approximately uh, twenty uh, homes on it. First road has never received gravel uh, to the road commission standards.
This is up twenty three north or south.
So. Birch is at the corner of uh, now it's Clark Construction.
My friend lives on that road, but they've never had gravel put on that road.
They didn't have any documentation that they've put gravel.
Wow.
Um, the next one is a uh, Belore Road. Um, this is a forty eight hundred linear feet. Um, this road is in the whole little, there's a a a unique drainage issue with Truckee Road, which is one of the projects that is still.
Okay, yeah.
Can extend the sewer to your house. Um, no, uh, so Boiler Road, we've done the only project that we've done on Belore.
And I was gonna say Boiler.
It's the ongoing. Uh, Belore Road, um, the only project that we've commenced since this board has been here is a ditching problem, uh, ditching uh, to relieve some of the drainage to the intersection of Truckee Road. Truckee Road still has a project forthcoming this season that we've already approved for ditching. Uh, approximately uh, a sixteenth of a mile uh, west northwest of uh, our current clerk. Um, not that that had anything to do with it. The issue is that there's a lot of drainage issues.
What we're doing.
Just been.
It just, just before it's.
I'll never see it.
Go for your loss. Um, and so at fifty fifty cost share, that would be twelve thousand. Um, Haken Road, um, there are two miles of Haken Road that we have not um, touched. It's been on the 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 topic of conversation. This is Haken Road. Actually, two different topics. Uh, one, uh, it's our municipal boundary with Maple Ridge. Uh, Haken Road is broken in the middle. Uh, the junction is Villanueve to Truckee and then back part to Naylor. Uh, but uh, this segment is off of Long Rapids.
Yeah.
Well, you have to take Naylor to French to Le Comte, to be back to base. Can you do the work?
Sounds like one of my.
Yeah, so you you might know it. Anyways, this, this is the section of Haken Road off of Long Rapids. Uh, we have never put uh, gravel on that road. Uh, and last but certainly not least, uh, would be a two mile stretch from Hamilton Road to Bloom, which we have not put any uh, gravel on that road and given its traffic. Um, that's something that may be downstream, that would be a project if we had the ability.
Hamilton to Bloom?
Hamilton North to Bloom.
Oh, oh.
Two miles.
Oh, yeah.
We've put money in from Bloom North to twenty three. Um, but that road, I think uh, trusty crawl could attest to the condition of uh, that stretch of road, considering he's at the point of beginning. Yes.
Oh, how come that cost shares different than the other ones?
I was wondering that too.
So this is where we actually kind of use up through the projects up to this point is kind of used up the hundred and I believe it was a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and fifty eight was the fifty fifty cost share for this year with the road commission. It used some of it, but we exhausted the the cost share, which that kind of shows why there's.
So who is the other share then?
It's the road commission paying the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Who's paying the forty one eight ninety two?
Yeah, yeah, no, I I guess I didn't pay much attention to the format there.
It's good for us, we're paying.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could approve a contingent upon clarification, because that does seem a little odd. I know that there was upon with these, these projects, we've encapsulated the fifty fifty match with the road commission. But I'd actually have to ask uh, Ms. Patterson, why this? Came up, I should have.
It's not a special, that's not my own.
No, it's not. It is not a special assessment district, but those could be forthcoming. Given the fact that the road millage was unsuccessful and there are a lot of road.
So that twelve thousand ends our budget for those, for that work for this year.
Correct. This year. And it's still maintained uh, about rough calculations, roughly ten thousand remaining in the GL with these projects approved.
Oh, we will still.
We'll still have flexibility. I over anticipated what the final numbers were gonna be from the first round of them um, approved. Uh, work.
They might put it here.
Well, having recently been on that stretch of Long Lake and also on Haken, uh, that's those two, which sure need some help.
Yeah, they, they all, and we always try to do a great job spreading it out and looking at uh, population densities and and traffic patterns. Um, and so it would be my recommendation, uh, obviously with the stipulation of clarification on the Long Lake uh, economic driver uh, to move forward uh, with the road agreements.
I'll make a motion to that effect with clarification on Long Lake Road that it's support up to, should we say, up to a certain amount?
I can, what I can do is tomorrow I'll shoot an email asking clarification and just have her reply to the board. That way we can all be on the same page. I I don't know what her rebuttal's gonna be. So I mean.
So, I mean, what if it ends up being twenty thousand? Or what if it absorbs that extra ten?
Share it all, so.
Yeah.
I think we should just put it up to our share.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yep.
As presented.
We got the, maybe when you ask questions, we want the answers.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and support.
So that is as presented.
As presented.
Who's supported?
Uh, I think. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yeah.
Third Clavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. I will need to get a two trustee signatures on all of the executable uh, doc, excuse me, documents before you uh, leave for the evening. Um, last item of new business is the uh, addition of the Wyndham uh, Gardens uh, in your packet. Uh, we also have with us this evening uh, Chair of the uh, Wyndham Gardens uh, HOA, Mark Scapannic.
So, yes, I'm in Mark Scapannic, that is the uh, guy in the line of the total table and the president. Um, and uh, basically what uh, what I'm here for is in uh, actually last year, a year ago. Yes, sir.
Is there two or three here?
Just two. Oh, just passed it on.
Okay, but there's just.
There's multiple copies for. Um, we were here a year ago, um, asking for a couple of changes to the water sewer agreement between Wyndham Gardens and in the township. Uh, we were informed that we were gonna have to uh, pony up to a hundred and six thousand dollars to replace all of the um, lift station um, equipment, which we agreed to do. Uh, the township was, and you folks were kind enough to change the agreement uh, in two ways. One, um, well, actually, only one is that was the um, transferring future maintenance from the time the project was complete to you folks. Um, we were under the understanding that there are other communities that have not had to pay the maintenance. Uh, so we're now in that same category. Um, as of completion of that, the other thing that um, happened in the Bristol Amendment that was approved was an agreement that if there's any cost over a hundred and six thousand dollars, that any of that extra cost as far as the project would not go to us, it would be the township's responsibility. So so that background, um, project was completed in terms of the initial installation, the week of um, February twenty one. And um, in the course of that, we expected it as homeowners that the lights would be off for all of our residential streets during that period of time. Um, and the project was done and the lights did not come back on. So um, this was brought to the township's attention at the time that uh, it occurred and I did not have any mo- movement on that. Uh, we attempted to work with the contractor, John's Electric, who you have a quote here for to try to resolve that on our own and we're told that um, you know, this has to go through the township in order to make this work. Um, after tempting a couple of times to get some movement, I I finally asked um, uh, you folks to get on this board agenda, you know, today as a backup to to help us to move forward on this. Um, and we have made some good progress in the last, uh, last month. Uh, we met with Mr. Skibby and[1774.36] and Tim last Thursday. And there is a plan, um, it's fifty eight hundred and eighty dollars. The part that we were not prepared for is the invoice is submitted to us to pay. Um, it's getting awful dark out there, guys. We haven't had any lights for seven months. So, um, the board, our board has met this last week and we're deciding to go ahead with this scope. Um, regardless of what you guys do, what you feel your responsibilities are because it's getting dark. So we're doing that, um, but we were asking a few things as first some clarity in terms of these items, in terms of you know, the court, I, I think it's pretty obvious, the coordination, it's gonna take a lot of coordination to get this done. It's important for you folks for this John's Electric contractor to do the work. Let's see, second one. So if there's any, you know, cost other than what's quoted by John's Electric, you know, we're asking that, you know, you have to pump out the sewer stations or if there's other costs that are unknown, that, you know, that will be your responsibility. And.
Well, it talks about Alpine Power, our company does not include power company disconnect and reconnect charges.
Yeah, that, that is. I, I don't know. So, you know, that would be another.
Repairing streetlights.
Yeah, that would be another. So, so those are the three things obviously that we're looking for because we've already been asked to pay some money that we don't think really was in our scope. Now, granted, um, and Mr. Skibby may as maybe is advised to maybe not, but the scope was not anticipated by other part, either party. Um, you know, when the project was envisioned, so we proposed at this meeting on Thursday and and the board would support, our board would, you know, and ask, we're asking if, you know, you could split the cost with us on this extra scope, but but short of that, we need to get it done. So we're going to. You know, if you guys don't decide to uh, to support, you know, a portion of that down the road, um, that's, that's your decision, but we're not asking you for that decision today. Obviously, we're just throwing this at you. So, uh, let's see. I, I guess the other thing is, is is there anything else that's gonna come up later on where we're gonna be able to pay some more money for other things where, yeah, we should be done in terms of our responsibilities with this portion here. So that's item one. Um, the second part is, um, you know, was discussed last Thursday, the the agreement that we have with you, the water and sewer agreement states that we're responsible for the power cost of the lift stations and that clearly um, you folks would end up with your own meters just for the lift pumps. And so that portion of the agreement would have to be changed. Let's see. I guess the other part of it is, is just so that there's something documented that Wyndham Gardens would like to have uh, something in writing saying that we have the right to put that second meter that's just for our lights on, on the panel that you guys have taken over from us going forward. And we will have access to that to maintain it, et cetera. Yeah. Um, and I guess we'd like to have that ready to go. Um, in terms of uh, before deer season, the next meeting, if we've had a opportunity to have that be signed, that would be great. So.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Scapannic. Is there any questions uh, from Mark?
Always. Yeah.
So we are not deciding on this at this meeting.
Well, we can, I mean, if you'd like to discuss it, uh, Tim was, I had him present. Um, I guess I'll, I'll uh, lean on Tim as to.
And, and both Mark and you can correct me if I'm wrong with the lingo or the sequence of events. I'm not a real mechanical person, but uh, when the water and sewer system was installed originally and it was a nineteen ninety five agreement where the township um, took over was given that infrastructure. Uh, and the contract provided that township owns all the lift stations and related components. But Wyndham Gardens was responsible for the cost of future repairs to the lift stations. Unlike Trow Bridge, another similar neighborhood, similar agreement. But Trow Bridge wasn't responsible for future maintenance of the lift station. I have no idea why they were different. So the contract that was entered recently with Wyndham Gardens was to undo that clause, make it consistent with other neighborhoods. Through the work on the lift stations, they were failing, needed to be done. Wyndham Gardens paid up to
Hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand dollars for that. And through that process, they discovered that their street lighting had wrongfully been connected, not Mark's fault, uh, back in ninety five when the uh, electrician uh, involved with the project. I piggybacked onto the water sewer electrical township property, infrastructure. And for all these years, it's been part of that now through this work. Currently, recently, experts like Christian are on, that's not code, that's not appropriate. We've got to separate those two. And so what Wyndham Gardens is asking is that they've got this additional cost reflected in the quote. Uh, township, in light of the unusual situation, will you split that cost?
Yeah, I don't want to argue about it. I just want to get it.
I think that's where we're at. Yeah. Um, so nobody until this work was done, would have expected streetlights to be connected to water and sewer infrastructure.
Sounds right to me.
And it was done in nineteen ninety five and it was never noticed until now?
Because they were paying for both. I mean, they were paying.
Yeah, the bill had always been it. So that's moving forward. The analogy is if you look at all of our other lift stations, we don't have any other ancillary power being drawn from that panel. And if you actually go back to, and I have it, uh, as to the specifications and the build out uh, requirements for the whole project. The, the panels themselves are brand new electrical panels. Now, in this discussion that we had uh, this past Thursday, it was brought to our attention also that there's wooden uh, sheeting on poles, basically that hold all the electrical panels. Those, that infrastructure is failing. And that is the townships. So would be who bus to, I think, uh, John's Electric hat. He had, he didn't send me that quote.
I didn't either.
But that would be a cost that, because that is our infrastructure, we're definitely, we would have to pony up for the cost of putting in the new panels. Uh, obviously the, and then you see what was presented by uh, Chair Scapannic uh, with their proposals brought forth. Um, the ability for them to attach their meter head on the same wooden platform. If you think of it, look at the whiteboard. That's the panel and then all the electrical conduits are attached to it. The panel itself is rotting. It's just womanized lumber.
When you talk about panel, I thought you were talking about electrical panel. You just talked about.
It's, it's actually the, the board. It's connected. I'm not electrician. I've been.
Twenty, twenty-five-year-old fire. So, yeah.
Getting. Um, I received Alpine Power bill that they were in the garden left stage.
Yep, and I had them labeled uh, because there's three um, meters
Okay.
that control for the station.
Yeah.
And I had them designated as such. So that way, as we know with our other infrastructure, F and B likes to look at electrical use to see what's the wear and tear and if there's an issue or a high water event.
And those bills are only including the wa, lift stations, as I understand it, because the lights are hot, right?
Right.
No, not completely.
Not completely. Yeah, we found that out as well. At, at the covered bridge on that panel, as it still stands, there's the sign lighting and just a few ancillary lights.
Yeah, there's lights on the bridge and the front entrance sign, but that, that particular panel, there was a separate breaker for the lights versus the pump. So they didn't have to disconnect the lights. So, so the, the front end is good until you guys um, you know, chop it off. So, but.
And per Thursday, we said we're not gonna chop it off because we, I think we're all on the same page, but moving forward, the infrastructure can't have other ancillary. So this was a, a sad reality of bad nineteen ninety five practice. And so how does it? Uh, I guess we could look at it as internal conversation and postpone this to our subsequent meeting. They need to move forward with it. Um, I didn't have this proposal. I don't know.
No, I, we're not expecting you to vote on this today.
Yeah, but we could, we could postpone it and rediscover this at our October meeting.
That, I would also like to sign a, a second amendment regarding the things we have here.
I'll draft that, the interim, because um, one of the things uh, that was overlooked, yeah, that still provides that they're supposed to pay for the electricity and uh, and now they're our lift stations. And uh, so we're gonna pay for the electricity.
So we're gonna revisit this on October.
Correct. Okay. Yeah, there's, there's parts of this that we obviously discussed. So, yeah, we're.
But in the interim, I'm just asking, is the work gonna get done?
You said you're moving forward.
We've, I, I don't think, you know, it's, it's pitch black and it's not safe. It's winter time coming up. So we are.
And trick or treaters and kids and.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's, yeah, we're, we're, we're moving on and the efforts of providing for the safety. But we're also asking you to consider this. And uh, my last comment is, you know, neither one of the parties, you guys maintain it all this time. We just paid the bills, but until you open panels, you really wouldn't know. Yeah, so, so, um, so, you know, the bottom line is this change, we get the benefit of our lights back, but you also get the independence that you want for your maintenance of your pumps, you know, with, and, and monitoring going forward. So I think uh, this shared cost is a win-win and, and that's why we're asking you to consider it. So. Any, any questions? Just holler.
So what I'm hearing is this quote is to do what needs to be done. You're gonna go ahead and do it. You're asking for the township to share the cost.
We're asking uh, kindness to your heart to split the bill. Yes.
Okay.
And. That's correct.
Yeah, so. I'd entertain a, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion uh, to bring this back forth to our.
Motion to table.
Well, it'd be postponed. So.
Same, same. I don't know if there is such a thing as Robert's rules, but okay, anyway.
Actually, I was corrected.
Is it to table?
Yeah, table to the subsequent meeting. Of a motion on the table and support to table to our October regularly scheduled meeting.
To specific date.
Yeah. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I, all those in favor of uh, tabling until our October meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve the same. Uh, item has been tabled to our October meeting. Uh, moving forward, uh, that, are there any questions as to any of the department reports?
What's a fall through call? I'm just clear.
A fall through is uh, we have our internal phone system uh, where we, we catch basin.
Okay.
If there's no other questions.
I have a question on your report, Supervisor Skibby. You have that you went to a ARRB board meeting recycling two and then a little ways down, you attended two recycling meetings. Are those both the same or are they different?
Just checking your tag sheet.
Okay, because I use an increment in the first, no.
Good catch. We're good.
Copy that. If there's no other questions to the department reports as provided, I would entertain a motion uh, to go into closed session.
All right.
Yes, by means.
Motion to enter closed session in order to, one, consider written confidential legal opinion from the township attorney pursuant to MCL one five dot two six eight L H and two, involve the township attorney regarding trial strategy in the water sewer rate litigation pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight L E.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported.
Supposedly supported it.
Trusty Foley. Who's been supported. Further discussion? Seeing none.
Uh, are you doing public comment after your closed session or?
The agenda's always presented.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Um, so we have a motion in support, seeing no other further discussion. Uh, we'll call this.
Trusty Foley.
Yeah.
Sir Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trusty Crow.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, we're now officially in a closed session at eight oh four.
You're making more. Unless you want to further leave now.
Are we back up? Okay, uh, we're officially back in an open session, uh, which brings us uh, in the agenda to our second public comment.
No.
Oh, we have a motion we need to do.
I do, I do apologize sincerely.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to request the city of Alpine provide cost information on water and sewer to enable the township consultant to calculate a tentative rate increase to the city.
Motion on the table. Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Sir Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trusty Crow.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Foley.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize an inner fund loan from the general fund to the water fund in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand contingent upon review and approval of the auditor.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
We support it.
We moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Sir Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trusty Crow.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Foley.
Yeah.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And now back to my previous words. We are now at the point of the agenda of a public comment. If there's any public comment uh, in person, please stand at the podium, uh, state your name for the minutes and limit yourself to three minutes.
Name is Jerry Jones. Um, I was just wondering. Okay. I was just wondering, um, what difference does it make whether the millage passes to make the improvements to the south side station? The fire department is still going to be there whether the village passes or not. We're still going to be using the station whether this passes or not. What, what difference does that make? Anybody?
This is public comment. This is not.
I, I, I'm, I'm asking, I, I, I don't understand why, why, why somebody can't answer the question.
Because this is the format of our meetings and it always has been. The public comment is for your comment to the board.
Okay, well, in my, in my opinion, that, that, that shouldn't matter. Like you said, we're using the building now. We're going to be using the building in some form whether this passes or not. Would, I, I, I can't understand waiting for whether or not this, this millage passes. It's almost like you are stating we don't care about this department if the village doesn't pass. To hell with it if it doesn't pass is, is, is kind of the way it's coming across. I, I don't know if that's accurate, but it's, it's the way it's coming across. And I, I, I just don't understand. We're looking at something that is going to be a dramatic improvement to the building the way it looks and actually show that we care about our fire department, the way it looks, the way it's presented to the public. I, I really don't understand not, not doing this. The chief has done a lot of work in getting this proposal for a remarkably low amount of money to have this done. Anybody else doing it would be a heck of a lot more. I don't know, a lot of work's been done into that. Just to kind of shoot it in the foot, just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Jones. Podium's open.
Name's Kevin Galloway. Sure, probably aware of where I first started. Came here two years ago, was super active with the township. I mean, I almost ran a hundred calls probably a month. Sure, Michelle's aware. She does my time cards. I'm very active. I give quite a bit of time away from my family um, to serve the citizens that uh, I take pride in doing. I went away for seven months, came back, uh, came back because I believed the township was going on the right purpose. I believe that, that Mark was the man to do the job and uh, I felt like I wanted to give it all to try and make this place what uh, what I want it to look like. Since then, I've came back. Uh, I do work a full-time job now, so I'm not as active as I once was, but I do get every night and sometimes even during the day. Last week, Thursday, we were torn up for a fire. I left my job, gave up my hours at my paying job. I pay my bills with, with for my family to go fight that fire because I knew that was the right purpose. And I guess I'm, I'm very disappointed tonight that I didn't get gear issued for, for my safety, do the job for the public. Now, I, I realize that maybe that was a brand new person and you didn't know how active I was gonna be. It might be a little hesitation. But I have been. But I have been super active in the last three months. I've gave this place a hundred and ten percent. I don't have any evenings out with my, with my child, with my fiance. I spent time running calls for the community that we all serve. And so I guess I'm very disappointed that that wasn't. A priority. I realized the village, not the village. I wanted to think that matters when there's someone in a building and I can't go in there. Without the gear. That's something we all got to have on our hearts. I know I, I'm going to feel sidelined and you're taking one of your key players out. Unfortunately, so I just, I promised stuff me tonight, I wasn't going to come. I was going to spend time with them tonight, have dinner, play a game, but. Welcome to, to the meetings tonight. I had to come and speak my word, otherwise I might regret it. So. Once again, I am very disappointed in that and I think we can do better. And that's that. I believe in the purpose of the community and doing what I love, so that means I can only run medical calls, then, then so be it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Galloway. Are there any other comments?
Hey, Melissa Haskinson, no semi yes. Probably shouldn't even be up here, but I think everybody else is done speaking. I came as a clerk to observe. And what a night to come and observe. A lot different than ours. We have five on our board. You guys have seven. I wear two hats. I have the clerk hat, I have a fire department hat. I know how our department does things, so I was kind of learning. I'm, you know. Seeing you guys have different funding and all that. I do know that. At a meeting out at ours, I had inquired one topic about me being able to volunteer alongside my husband. I am aware tonight that that is not possible because it's impractical for me not to be a. I'm not an Alpine Township at Maple Ridge, so for me to be able to come and fight fires, I can't because my husband is here. So. That I guess is kind of related, that it's relative, I mean, obviously. So that will be a no. And as a question, I did actually ask two of the board members separately. You know, and I did have one board member tell me. That a good township is one without a fire department, and I think you guys are wrong. Now granted, I think you have a wonderful person trying to build it up again. You, you can't lose it. You know, you'll never get it back to N F P A standards. You know, that goes too costly if you give in to anybody else. I know you need a new plan. It's going to take a few more than, you know. To work forward, but I, I see it. I see it both ways. I don't want to be in anybody's position here. I got my own little one out there. I don't know. I, I S O insurance rates, pump rates, I got to be part of that. Our insurance went down for our community to do that. I don't know where yours stands. Let these guys fight. They obviously get paid less than where they have been. And we know that's an issue, but they want to be here. They want to be here for the township. Don't. They're not the old guys. They're old guys, but they're not the old guys. Yeah, that's me. Thank you.
Any other public comment or is there any public comment online?
Well, it's nine o'clock, so I appreciate you guys still being here. My name's Blaine Gawn, one of your full-time department here. And just a couple of things with regards to South Station. There is no signage on it currently because we had to take those off when we power washed it. And they were brittle enough to where when they got hit with power washer, they exploded. So that problem at least has to be looked at to get it dressed in some way or shape or form to designate it as a fire station. In regards to some other issues with. South, you know, I, I get. What Trustee Ryan Hart was saying, it's, it's a hard time right now to ask people for anything. We said it at the last workshop we had. It's not easy to ask people for money now. But it's something that in the long term, if you look at it. And you say, okay, if I invest in this now, even if you go to resell it, the resale value is earned. If they raise it, they raise it. But let's say you get the money and the village does pass. You still have to wait to get the funds together to build a new station. So you at least have something that shows everybody. That you've put the money there and invested in it and spent their money wisely. Not just be it on a new piece of equipment, but also in the building itself, because anybody can buy a big red ding ding and say, I spent five hundred thousand dollars. But to show that you have the building too, that houses, shows you're taking care of everything, not just one specific aspect of your assets. Another thing to consider with that too, though. Is even if you do. Build a new station on top of that. You can actually have a building that you can lease out to somebody. Let's say the city says, hey, we need a south side station. You now have that capability and it will house an ambulance perfectly. It houses two separate sizes. Ambulance appear fit just fine and the ambulance that was appears down. And if it's just fine as well. So you've met that goal for them and there's a source of revenue for you guys going forward. But I'm not going to take up too much more of your time. Big thing, I don't know if you're familiar with Mole Air. But he made a quote and I think it kind of is something to consider when you move forward with any. Further plans for the buildings or the township fire in general. It's not only what we do, but also what we do not do for which we are accountable. You know, it's a very important. Statement. You're going to be accountable. Might not be to any of us. We are going to be accountable to taxpayers, voters. And then people pay attention to these things as much as we don't want them to. Even if we try to sweep it under the rug. Say, yep, our records indicate this, records indicate that. They're all watching as much as it might not seem like it, but they pay attention. Steve Sholowitz pays attention, Alpine News pays attention, city pays attention. Maybe we should too. Start being more aware of what we're doing. Thank you.
Is there any public online? Or any public comment online? I apologize. If so, use the bottom task bar to send us a message or raise your hand. Seeing none. Or no other public comment? Further discussion by the board? None had, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion on the table to adjourn, is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at nine oh three. Thank you all very much.